Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson is in the building. He'll join us momentarily. Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you've given us freely. Father, we thank you for your Son, Jesus, most of all. I pray, Father, that you guide us and direct us through this meeting. Father, help us to carry forward in the business you have in front of us, Lord. Please grant this council and the mayor and his office. You're wonderful and very needed at all times. Wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and discernment, Father. May your will be done at all times. We give you all the praise and all the thanks. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting held on January 18th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 12th through the 18th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I know Mayor Ford has a couple today. Mayor Ford?
Thank you, Mr. President, members. So, we have some exciting news today. And I want to invite the family and the educators that are here with them up at the same time that I'm presenting this. We have named the kangaroos at the zoo.
All right.
So, this is a big deal. So, what we did, John Moore and Christina went around to all the fifth grade classes, showed a video, and then asked the fifth graders to submit on a card like this, and turned it in. And Mr. Blackwell and some members, Ms. Minas and some others at the Gadsden City Board of Education submitted to us the top five, and then we picked the top five from there. There'll be a plaque at the Falls. The winners receive a year's pass at Nakalula Falls and some goodies stuff here we have for them also. So, this one is Ms. Havana. Would you please step forward with your family? And Ms. Havana brings her today. Ms. Johnson is her teacher, and she is from Walnut Park Elementary.
All right.
So, how are you, Havana?
I'm good.
Several years ago, the petting zoo at Nakalula Falls Park experienced a tragic barn fire which took the lives of many animals. Since that time, we have been working hard to reestablish our entire animal habitat. The animals we had were Buck the deer, Shrek the donkey, Angel the llama, and some goats and sheep. Last year, Mayor Ford decided to add with the council new animals to our habitat family, and among those new animals were red kangaroos. Red kangaroos are native of Australia and are the largest of the kangaroo family, sometimes reaching a height of six feet. Our female red kangaroo has been with us since the early part of 2023, and we received the male red kangaroo in June. Mayor Ford and the council of Gadsden decided to host a contest amongst all fifth graders in the Gadsden City school system to officially name the kangaroos by selecting one girl and one boy as the winners. Today, we'd like to officially name the winners of the contest. We have Havana Christian from Ms. Crystal Johnson's class at Walnut Park Elementary School, and John Hughes from Ms. Julie Hibbs' class at Urea Brown. Havana chose the name Nakalula, and the female kangaroo, and John chose Chief as the male kangaroo. We'd like to thank all fifth graders who participated in the contest, and we congratulate you too on providing us the winners. We just talked about how I got crigisms. All right, so Havana, thank you. Would you like to say something? How'd you come up with that name? Did you speak into here?
I came up with the name.
Do what now?
I came up with the name because the name of Nakalula Falls.
Ah, well, that's cool. Well, thank you. All right, well, here's this, and John, where's John? Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, then Mr. Hughes.
Can we get a picture with Havana first?
Yes.
Come on. Have you seen the kangaroo?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the next winner is Mr. Hughes. Come on up. Dixie Calvin, how y'all? Lord, I didn't know this was... I know you. Yeah. All right, you, buddy. You know, slumming. Okay, so, the next winner is Mr. John Hughes, who goes to Urea Brown Elementary. He came with the male name of Chief, and I won't reread the resolution, but the resolution says the same. And who is your teacher? We have your principal with us today. Okay. All right, so, John, would you like to say something? How you came up with Chief? Come on up here.
I came up with Chief because it... 'cause Chief Nakalula felt sad because Nakalula fell off the waterfall, so that's why.
All right, thank you. Here's this. Don't get that to your grandparent. Let's get a picture. All right, thank y'all. Here's yours right here. So, we were gonna let the council come up with the name, and Councilwoman Wilson submitted naked pig. For back forty beers, so we decided to let the fifth graders do it. But thank you, Mr. President and council.
I think that's a great job. Way to go.
It would've worked.
It's exciting to have our students involved in the naming of the kangaroos. That was a good idea. Appreciate all the efforts. Appreciate all the people, all the students that submitted names. What next in the proclamations and commendations is that we've invited the head basketball, girls' basketball coach at Gadsden City High School, Coach Jay Tinker, to come today. We want to spotlight the girls' basketball team, so Coach, if you'll come forward. And we also have with us the ladies athletic director, Coach Amanda Lewis, is here today. So, if you'll come to the podium and bring your team, we'd love to greet you and hear from you guys. I first met Jay about... Jay, I was just thinking, I was doing the math. I think it's right. Jay was our son Allen's ninth grade basketball coach at Gadsden High School. That was some, I think, 24 years ago. So, that's... But you look the same, though. I look like I'm 112. You look like you're still 25 years old. But it's great to see you, and thank you for bringing your team. What a great-looking bunch you've got there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Big. Can you turn on the lights?
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Back, for having us here. I just want to let the city know that you all have been very supportive of us since I've been the head coach here at Gadsden City, and thank you. Our basketball program is not just these young ladies. These are the varsity players. We have three youth teams. We have two middle school teams, and we have two high school teams. This is the varsity team right here. We got from a seventh grade our way up to 12th grade on this team. Right now, we're in a position Friday where we can possibly win the area. You know, we've had some trials and tribulations, but we won the last three out of the four games, so we're getting it together when we supposed to.
That's what good teams do. They peak at the right time, right, Coach?
Uh-huh, and thank you for having us here.
Well, thank you. That's... Well, we just want to welcome you ladies to our council meeting, and we're proud of you. Appreciate the effort that you're putting in. And wish you the best of luck in your next game and in the tournament.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments?
When is the area tournament?
The area tournament won't be until the first week of February.
Okay.
We finish up area play Friday, be our last game.
How are we doing in the area?
Right now, we're two and one in the area. We're tied for first place for the girls.
That's why I asked.
Yes, yes, yes. Like I said, Friday, it'll be... If everybody want to come, Friday, we play Oxford, and that'll be for the area championship, regular season area championship.
At home?
At home, correct.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, and good luck, ladies.
All right.
Just like to say congratulations.
The girls will play at 6 o'clock. The varsity girls will play at 6:00, and the varsity boys will follow after about 7:30.
All right. Councilman Smith had a comment.
Just want to say congratulations to your coach, and you're doing a fantastic job. Glad to see some members of New Destiny standing up there with you.
Oh, that's good.
All right. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Coach.
All right.
Good luck. Coach Lewis, thank you for taking time out of your day to come also. Thank you very much. All right, going on to item... Agenda item eight is unfinished business. We have none today, so we'll move to agenda item number nine. It's a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Harrelson Avenue Architectural Review Board. This appoints Kevin... And I didn't say that name right the last time. You might know how to pronounce.
Fathie.
Fathie? Kevin, this appoints Kevin Fathie for a term...
Fathie.
Fathie?
Fathie.
Okay. I'm sorry, Kevin, if you're out there, I apologize.
Fathie. Oh, I don't even know. Sorry.
Okay. Fati. All right, thank you. We're gonna get it right before we... With a last name like Back, I know the perils of having a name that people can't pronounce, so Fati. Well, Kevin's term is going to expire September 15th of 2025. This resolution also appoints, reappoints, rather, Bonnie Yornell and Craig Scott for terms expiring September 15th, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution. This is appointing members to the Humane Society Pet Rescue and Adoption Center Board of Directors. This appoints Councilwoman Dixie Minatra for a term expiring at the end of 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? I just want to say thank you, Councilwoman Minatra, for raising your hand to serve on that board. That is not an easy task. So, thank you for your work. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with Gadsden Premier Cinema LLC. This is to renovate, remodel its existing location at 1,001 Rainbow Drive. This is to grant a rebate for a period of 10 years of 2% of the city's 5% sales tax for years 1 through 5, and 1% for years 6 through 10, or until a total of $600,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is great news. I'm glad we got this done. We're gonna get a fancy new movie theater here in Gadsden, and we need it, so this is great.
Councilman Wilson, I've... We were discussing this a little bit. There's been some discussion about this on... Just in social media. Appears to be some misunderstanding. You do a good job of explaining how this works. Can I call on you to explain how the tax rebate works?
Sure.
And ramifications if we don't do it, what happens?
Yeah, the point is that I always try to drive home when explaining how these tax abatement deals work is we're not stroking a check to a business for $600,000. That's not the way it works. We don't use the taxpayers' money to proactively incentivize businesses. What we do is we structure it as a rebate. So, what has to happen is these guys are gonna spend about $3.5 million to improve the movie theater. All new reclining seats with tables and a whole new food and beverage experience, this whole thing, all new HVAC systems and everything. So, they're gonna lay all that money out, and then they project a certain amount of revenue. Well, when you spend a dollar at any business in Gadsden, you pay a 10% sales tax. Well, the city doesn't get all 10 cents of that. Some of that goes to the county, some of it goes to the state. The city gets 5 cents out of that 10 cent sales tax. So, what we're doing is we're saying, look, you go out and build and invest $3.5 million, you go out and create the revenue that you've projected in this deal that you're gonna create, and you pay your sales tax. You go ahead and remit that sales tax, and then and only then do we agree to give you a portion of that money back. So, that's why you hear us use the term rebate, and that's important because we're not laying out the city's money on the front end. We don't give them the rebate until they've invested all the money they said they were gonna invest and gone out and done all the revenue they said they were gonna do and paid their taxes, and then we give them a portion of it back. So, it's... To use a phrase that you've probably heard before, we're playing with the house's money here. This is money that we would otherwise not receive if this business were in operation. So, it's not like we're giving up taxpayer dollars. We're actually incentivizing growth by offering to rebate this money after the fact. So, again, this is a great thing. Every city needs a great movie theater, and Gadsden's no different. We've, for the last couple of years, heard, I'm sure all of you that... Any of you that are interested in the movies have heard time and time again, people going to Albertville or going to Oxford to go to these nicer, newer movie theaters. So, now Gadsden's gonna have one that's top-of-the-line luxury experience right here, right here in town, so this is great. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Mayor Ford, you have a comment?
Yes, sir. I just want to... I want to personally thank John Moore, Commercial Development Authority. This deal was leaving, and the movie cinema was moving and vacating, and he brought the owners of the mall together and the owner of the cinema and said, what if we get involved and participate and get the mayor and the council to be involved? Would y'all be considerate? So, this went on for about 90 days, and he put this deal together. So, I want to say thank you to John and for what you did to help do this. This is like Councilman Wilson said, this is definitely a quality of life issue that's needed in our community.
It is. Thank you, John. That's... You know, when we heard about this, we thought, you know, that's the only theater we have in Etowah County, and it's about to close, and we can't have a city and a county without a movie theater. So, appreciate the work, and thank you to the private investors and the people, the Gadsden Premier Cinema LLC, for putting $3.5 million into our economy here. I think that's a big deal. Any other comments? Any other discussion? Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution. This authorizes an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation. This is to allow the city to manage vegetation along portions of Highway 759. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this goes along with what you said earlier. Riverview now has a River View, and I give Councilman Back that statement, but that was a good statement. If you've noticed around Riverview, they've cleaned that area, and Heath, our engineer, for us to continue down Rainbow Drive now, we're getting an agreement with them to make it all capiche, so...
I think it looks really nice. It's really opened up the roadway and the view. All I hear is good comments.
Absolutely, and I want to thank our Public Works employees because they're humping it, and they're doing a great job with not the best of equipment, so we're working on that.
All right, thank you.
Well, Riverview better clean it up. I'll edit that.
All right. Any other discussion or comments? If not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation. This is to allow the city to manage vegetation along portions of Highway 411. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
It's the same thing as the previous one, just a different highway.
Yeah, just a different roadway.
1411, 1759.
Yeah. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Labella Associates DPC. This is for an architectural and engineering services study for the proposed relocation of the Gadsden Police Department, and the amount is $54,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Sir, Mr. President, what this has to do with is with the move to the new City Hall and who's going to be coming in here and where we're gonna locate the police department. We'll still have a police presence at City Hall, and we know we're going to fire stations with precincts, so our police will be spread out in communities and amongst your districts and the council districts and where new fire stations are going. However, the majority of the police department will no longer be located here due to the development happening, so it makes sense to put them where the traffic court is, and that's what we're looking at doing, the police compound with the court system and everything. So, it all works out logistically, so that's... It's just the beginning phases of that.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 15 comes under first reading. This is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2024 budget. This transfers $1,000 from the mayor's discretionary into the contract services account to fund employment of a senior aid worker in the city clerk's office in relation to a partnership with the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it at the next meeting.
So, Mr. President, I want to thank Ruth Moffett for doing this. She worked this out with East Alabama. As I'm aware, we only pay $1,000, and Ms. Iva Nelson was out of money, so we were transferring $1,000 from our budget to her budget, and she'll have a part-time employee. So, there's other departments that we can do this with also, and we're engaging in that area. You're getting a lot of bang for your buck, and you're allowing someone to come into the city and work and giving them an opportunity, and so that's kind of what we're... We're gonna do this down the road for many of our departments with East Alabama and Ms. Moffett.
I think that's great. It's great to partner with anyone, but especially with the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. That's a good partnership. Wise use of our money, and we appreciate the partnership. Okay, item 16 is new business. We have none today. And then item 17 is department reports, committees, and boards. Do you have anyone today?
So, Mr. President, this will be the last, and just a few of the departments that hadn't spoken, and some of the mayor's staff, and I remind everyone, please, no more than two minutes. Two minutes. Thank you.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Tina King, Director of City Services. Basically, I'm gonna summarize mine with the four Ds, and I've added a fourth D. It just... It was three, but I've added a fourth. If it's dogs, debris, drugs, or dummies. So, I've added dummies in because that's when you invite Public Works, Jason Hill, or you invite the police into your life, so that's a wide net. So, basically, I am Public Works and the police department, the liaison. I'm also Gadsden State Community College and Jacksonville State, as well as Civil Service Board. So, anything that has to do with any of those falls under the liaison four. We'll just leave it at that. I am very, very, very thankful for y'all and what you did with the Gadsden First Budget. You've allowed us to do a lot within my departments, most of which you've heard from the department heads. But one thing you haven't heard, Chief is real good at telling you how many officers he's short, because we focus on that. It's something we look at daily. But we can say we have hired 11, nine of which have completed the academy and are on staff here. So, that's a positive for us. We have also been able to purchase several new police vehicles to the tune of 34. So, that's huge. When we started, we had officers who were younger than their vehicles. We had dashes that were duct taped on. So, that's a huge accomplishment, and that's because of you guys, we were able to do that. One thing that you're probably not aware of is we have taken our ability to do the equipment in the police vehicles. We brought that in-house with the expertise of Jerry Ramsey and a new employee, Brett Davis. We are now doing our own installs. What does that mean? That means we get the vehicles on the road faster. So, that's big, and that's due to y'all increasing the budget for Jerry Ramsey's Department, EMA Communications. Within Public Works, I know y'all hear this weekly, what we do in Public Works. We've ordered so much equipment, but we have so far to go, and we're very, very thankful for what we have received. But in order to get our city to where we need to be so far as the look, the look of attracting industry and attracting new business, we have some ways to go. We have increased our tree crew. We've added a whole tree crew, and that's what's allowed us to do all of this beautification where you see our river. We have added... We decreased the middle management. We had a lot of redundancy there, so we went in and restructured Public Works. That's something you wouldn't know if you weren't in the everyday workings of Public Works. So, that is another huge thing for us. Within Public Works, that is residential garbage, transfer station, trash debris and leaf collection, street cleaning, and street maintenance. So, all of that falls under Public Works. So, if you have problems with any of that, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I often brag on Kent Back, Councilman Back. He will text me, call me, whatever, and it's easy because I have a text message from him, and I just relay that over to the appropriate person. So, I encourage all of you to do that. Last but not least, I do want to brag on Gadsden State Community College and Animal Control. Gadsden State Community College is assisting us right now with training our middle managers, giving them the appropriate leadership skills that they need to move up the ladder. We are growing our own leaders within our city for the first time. That's due to the Gadsden First Budget. We are investing in our employees so that they can give back to us later on, which is huge. What better than to have someone that you started at a lower level and have grown them, developed them, and they've moved up the ladder and are now running a department? That's our goal. The last thing I want to touch on is animal control. We have been able to properly equip our animal control, which is huge, because now they're not in harm's way. We've added one animal control officer to our existing fleet of animal control. We've been able to, and I say this with great pleasure, with the help of Best Friends Animal Society, we actually were able to send all of our animal control officers to a training last week where all five of them now have the certification. So, that's the first time in a long time we've had everyone trained. the certification. So that's the first time in a long time we've had everyone trained. Once again, thank y'all so much for the budget that you passed. We will continue to do the hard work, continue to clean up our city from drugs, debris, dogs, and dummies.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nazia Corbett. I'm the Community Development Planner. I just wanted to take some time to thank you, to the community, thanks to council, the mayor for your patience with our department. We are moving forward, but there has been a lot of changes in this program, probably the most since around 2003. So again, thank you all for your patience. We have a long way to go, but I think it's good to stay in that posture so that we don't remain stagnant and we continue to grow. We do have, we are currently working on our 2024 Annual Action Plan along with our five-year consolidated plan. We've been saying that a lot. It's a lot that it entails. And so we will be having our first community meeting on February the 8th at 11:00 a.m. here in the council chambers to kind of gain the ideas of the public and what the public is wanting to do with these dollars for 2024 and our five-year plan as well. And then we will have several meetings leading up to, you know, the submittal to you all after the public's input. So again, thank you all for your patience. I know I kind of get on y'all's nerves with these committee meetings and, you know, your input, but it's needed because it's about the community and the needs of the community and everyone working together. So again, I thank you all.
Thank you.
Hello and good morning to everyone. My name is Melcy Guyton, and my role is a secretary to the mayor's office. So my day consists of welcoming all visitors and anyone who comes into the door with a wonderful smile and making sure to get them to their meeting if they have one, or assist them with setting up a meeting. I also handle majority of the calls, so when you call, you're most of the time talking to me or John Stone, who assists as well. But whether the question is simple or it's an important constituent matter from things noticed in their neighborhood and also throughout the city, I make sure to segment all things and concerns to the proper department head in a timely manner to make sure that some type of resolution or, you know, if it's not a today thing, we can see how soon we can get it, you know, resolved. I also work with Brittany Perkins and John Stone, as mentioned, to make sure that nothing slips through the cracks for a very busy mayor who is all gas and no brakes. I can honestly say that my experience for the first full year has been tremendous as far as growth, both professionally and personally, and I do look forward to the years to come with the wonderful mayor and council and all employees of City of Gadsden. Thank you.
Mr. President, so I want to just say something. First of all, Tina King does a phenomenal job, and we wouldn't be successful without the mayor's staff that's in place. Nazia has taken and revamped the whole CDBG office and with new employees and new budget and does an excellent job communicating with Washington and Atlanta with Ruth at her help also. Melcy is like the team mom of the mayor's office. So, and I say that sincerely. We get some people that are aggravated and irritated because we do make mistakes, but boy, does Melcy just calmly talk to them. And when I hear it, I go out and I help Melcy, but Melcy can handle everything, and she runs that office smooth. So I just wanted to say that about her.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's a tough act to follow, too. I'm Brett Johnson, Chief of Staff to the mayor. When Mayor Ford asked me to share, I kind of had to scratch my head because by design, my position is not really to accomplish individual goals. It's kind of to help everybody else accomplish their goals. So it's less specialized, more generalized, kind of like a jack-of-all-trades-but-a-master-of-done situation. But so I spend a lot of time behind the scenes doing analysis, policy, budget, writing, strategizing, and trying to get us all moving in that direction. But I do serve as the mayor's liaison for the Fire Department, Public Affairs, the Clerk's Office, the Legal Department, Industrial Development Authority, the Gadsden Airport, the federal government, and the media. So just a couple little things on my task list. And we have had a great year, thanks to y'all, thanks to this team that the mayor has put together and the community support. Some of the things I've been involved with, I mean, we've gotten some federal earmarks for the first time ever that are still pending. We've developed a position for an airport manager, and we've got an executive who knows what they're doing out there, making things happen at our airport. We landed UltraSafe Nuclear Corporation, which is going to be a game changer for Gadsden. But probably my most proud accomplishment that we've all been a part of this year as a parent of three children under five years old is something y'all approved several months ago, and it should open up here in a couple of weeks, is a baby box that we're installing at the fire station in East Gadsden here soon. Just something that's near and dear to my heart, and it's been, it'll be something that'll be in our region that no one else offers as a service. So I'll just wrap up and say everything that we do really is a team effort, and so all the credit and all the blame is spread out across the board. But I do want to thank y'all, council, and mayor for working together and showing through leadership what community really can look like and making these things happen by seeing a bigger vision. So I appreciate it.
Thanks, Brett.
Brett, I just want to tell you what my pa-pa used to tell me. You said you're a jack-of-all-trades and master of none. My pa-pa used to say, "Your knowledge is a mile wide and an inch deep."
Remember, he wrote that resolution about you.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Spurling. I'm the Risk Manager for the city, which means I generally don't have anything interesting to talk about. However, I have something to talk about today that I'm very proud of. One of the responsibilities in our department is employee benefits and retiree benefits. In 2023, we had 14 different rates for retiree insurance. We had some retirees that were paying over $2,000 a month for coverage, which is obviously unreasonable. I was able to meet with the mayor and some of his staff, and Brett got to work and developed a new rate system where we now have eight rates, and retirees pay 45% of the coverage, and the city pays 55%, which is a huge benefit. That's a savings of $1,000 a month for some of those retirees. So on behalf of all of our retirees, I would just like to say thank you very much for the mayor addressing the need and for you all adopting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll say this about Stacy. She's short in her office. Not short literally, but she has just her and one other person that handles over 600 employees and all their benefits, and not only that, their retirement, getting people hired, their physicals. It's a big feat, and she handles, we self-insure our workers' comp, and she is the sole negotiator for some of those cases. So just imagine what all goes on in there. She does an excellent job, and Debbie. And then Brett, enough said. So, yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm having to deal with John Moore over here. That's part of our job. Good morning. My name is Ruth Moffett. I am the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Director here at the city, and I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to serve here. And so under the previous mayor and council, they had some recommendations, and I know Councilman, I keep wanting to say Robot, because I can just see you out on the dance floor, but Councilman Wilson to be familiar with. Some of those recommendations was that diversity, equity, and inclusion would look at education, would look at housing, would look at employment, police, culture, and community. And so as I'm working in my area of diversity, equity, and inclusion, I'm looking at that internally, you know, in the city, and then I'm looking externally, you know, how do we make sure that we create that equitable piece and have that inclusivity that we're talking about? And I can tell you, that is so, so very broad. And so I want to first thank you all, because with the Gadsden First Budget, one of the things in changing workplace culture is demonstrating value. And so we started out doing a survey. I did it in the mayor's office first before launching it and within our workforce. And it was interesting because it revealed that some people didn't go to some events because they weren't as informed. And if the mayor's office, as small as it is, if there was a niche there where people, a bottleneck where we weren't getting the information, then if that's happening on that small level, it's happening on a larger level. And so we created, we started doing newsletters so that we could get that information out. So part of value is demonstrating that you've heard the person's voice through the actions that you do. And so I also serve as the liaison for urban transportation, our Transit Authority, which is through FTA. That's a federal grant, and it is massive, obviously through community development. I appreciate Nazia and Christie for the amazing work that they do, the Museum of Art and History, Municipal Court, the Library Emergency Management Agency. It's one of my areas, and we have recently connected with Family Success Center, Emma Hazelwood, and Etowah Food Bank, Marie Johnson, so that when we have disaster, we need some people that can be on the ground immediately. So just so that everyone knows, if there's a fire, when our EMA goes out, behind first responders, Family Success Center goes out. And if that person, if there's no one there to do a hotel stay, they can do that, and they can do other services. God forbid we have a disaster, but you know, weather, you can't predict it. So Nakalula taught us a lot. It taught us that we need those nonprofit agencies that are boots on the ground. Family Success Center has taken that spot, and they have ran with it, and they're doing a tremendous job. Etowah Food Bank just recently packed bags for us for our homeless count that we'll be doing in a few days. Do I have more time, John? I'm the liaison for nonprofits, and then we do grant writing as well. All of us do grant writing. I serve on several boards. I won't go through all of those. In wrapping up, I'll say this. I serve as the Chair for our Continuum of Care, which is Homeless Coalition of Northeast Alabama. So it's made up of Calhoun County, DeKalb County, Etowah County, and we're getting prepared to do what we call our point-in-time counts. That will be on Wednesday. The purpose of this is it has, is two major purposes. One is to have an accurate count of what we, who we have in Gadsden that are homeless. Number two, so that we can take those numbers and send them to HUD to get funding. So we're looking to do a big count this coming up Wednesday, Wednesday morning. Rain may hinder us a little bit. We've already asked for some assistance from different entities within the city. So if someone hears me today and you want to be a part of it, we want you to be a part of it. We're going to do a training today at 3:00, and we'll do that count. And that is part of that equitable piece, because we have a lot of people that are homeless that have mental illness, and it's inequitable to have those people on the streets or in jail when really they need to be in a facility. But it will take our numbers to make that happen. The last thing I'll say, and I'm way over my time, I'm sorry, John. I'm real excited about this because this is also inclusivity, and this is, this deals with equitable. And Councilman Smith, you will like what I'm about to say. We're going to host our first blood drive on March the 1st, right here at City Hall. We have a big, big day planned for that day. And listen, if you, I am alive because of blood donations. I didn't realize the importance of it until I had a bag hanging up over me every six months, looking at a number on that bag and wondering, who was that person that extended life to me? I know Councilman Smith can attest to this. So Councilman Smith, myself, I know Tina and some others Tina can't give either. We're going to be cheerleaders, because the people that give, you're giving us life, right? We're trying to see if we can do something with platelets on that day. The mayor has agreed to do some particular things, but I am really excited about this. So I thought this was the perfect opportunity to share this with everyone. And listen, our mayor's going to come out giving blood, and some more, you're going to give some more stuff, right?
Platelets and everything.
That's what this, that's what this role is all about. It's about all the ways that we differ. It's about creating that equitable piece, and it's about inclusivity. And I couldn't be more excited that I get the opportunity to serve in it. So thank you for that opportunity.
So, Mr. President, we've come up with something that we're going to allow employees, if they give blood, they get two hours off. If they give platelets, they get four hours off.
Oh, wow.
To try to encourage.
You didn't say it.
Yeah.
Is it afternoon yet? Good afternoon, council and mayor. First of all, let me thank all of you all for allowing me to participate in the City of Gadsden. It really has been an honor and a pleasure. I should say there is a great staff, and the mayor has accumulated a great staff that reports to him as liaisons. There is so much. It's really difficult to start, but I will try to highlight a few of the high points. Not only am I one of the mayor's liaison's personnel, but I work as the Director of Planning. And Director of Planning is really a fascinating opportunity. And John has already been mentioned for the movie theater, but I also like to mention him for Whataburger that we will have in the, in the city of Gadsden. And that's really just the beginning of his work. He's continuing, I should say, with breakneck speed in trying to get companies into the city of Gadsden. In zoning, I have Tracy Cordell working, and she's been doing a fantastic job. She was selected most recently as there was a change. And let's just say, she's already certified. She's ready to go, and she's been helping out tremendously with both, I should say, David Hooks and with John Moore in attracting businesses into the city of Gadsden. She's also been working with our master plan, Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. And we won't get into really a lot of the details associated with the master plan until we get into the rezoning that will occur after the master plan is implemented. And that, that will be a lot of work, and we will have to make sure that we have a lot of vision, because the zoning should go beyond what we currently have, and at a minimum, look at about 10 years out, but lay the format so that we could go out even further than that. If you all remember our zoning, I mean, our master plan, I think the last one was 1974. So it's been a while, and it really is time to update. Mayor, I want to thank you for doing a fantastic job with that, and there's so many other opportunities. Also work with, I should say, Erin, with the e-bank, Erin Patterson. She's done a wonderful job with the, I should, I called it the e-bank, but it's actually the land bank. The land bank uses e-Properties as its software, and let's just say, without her, we wouldn't be where we are. And I personally like to thank her for the work that she, she has done. And that's with the, with the mayor all over us, trying to get us to get it done faster. But it's coming, it's coming to fruition into, into, into life. I forgot to mention Erin Cody in planning. She works with us and helps us keep our schedule together. That's even though Heath is working her to death. She is constantly working on projects for Heath. And there are a couple other things. One is, is that we will become a gig city. I'm not really at this point waiting to get into the details, but with Brett and the mayor's participation, Gadsden will become a gig city. Before long, you'll start seeing many towers within the city of Gadsden so that we can increase that gigabyte speed in access for all of our computers and cellphones within, within the city. So thank you, thank you both for that. The mayor, facilities maintenance, hired excellent, let's just say, Terrence Renault, and he has been doing a fantastic job. He has improved, let's just say, the maintenance within this city tremendously. He has began to save us so much money. It's, it's, it's really incredible. He's just, he's a hard worker, and he's got a great, a great team. There's just a couple, a couple more things. And I got to Erin, the properties, John, the land bank, the planning, oh, and planning also, I forgot to mention the work done with the cancer center. And we will have a new health center here in Gadsden. It's basically already been agreed to. It just has to be begun. And of course, the mayor is always getting us money, so we'll get that money so that we can make this, this project, this project work. I wrote down my notes very quickly and very succinctly, I think, and I'm sure there are things that I've mentioned, that I've missed. And one of them is working with, how should I say, Ruth's expert, Nazia, in CDBG. She does a tremendous job, and she will be very beneficial for the land bank as, as, as well. I think I've taken up enough time.
I'll say this while Rod's sitting down, but Rod saved us in one decision a million dollars. And don't want to get into that, you know, in detail, but he, when he says he wants to do a data analysis, get ready. So thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lamar Jaggers. I'm the police chief. I'll just bring out the pleasantries and the unpleasant. The pleasant is we have attacked a problem, our logistical problem of vehicles, and I appreciate that. The mayor's pushed that, and the council has to, and we're catching up to the curve. We haven't made it around the curve yet. We'll just leave it at that, but we're getting there. The other problems is personnel. I appreciate y'all doing what you've done there. I suggest that we do more. I believe this is an employee-driven market. That's just some label I've put on it. That's nothing sophisticated. But everyone's looking for dispatchers and police officers because there's certain requirements, legal requirements that you have to be, have to get both. You can't just hire anybody. You can't just hire anybody. We're competing with all the counties touching us. We're not just competing with agencies in our county. We're struggling to keep people. We're struggling to get people. The numbers change daily on who's coming, who's going. We're five dispatchers short. That's roughly 29% of where we'd like to be. We're 30 police officers where we'd want to be. We're 28% short there. Oh, we need more cars. If we're able to find the officers, we're not going to have the cars because we've been replacing the cars that end to life. I guess that's the best way to put it. I mean, we've had them for a long time and they've worked. I mean, we've took care of them. Fleets took care of them. They made them last. I mean, we were, when the mayor came in, we were still driving Crown Victorias. And I think they stopped making them in like 2011. And we had them from 2007 to 2011. So I mean, the city, the citizens of Gaston got their money's worth out of them. But I mean, at some point, we have to buy vehicles and we've done that. I mean, y'all have really helped us there. But I suggest that we dig deep, figure out what we can afford and the next budget, go big, or we may all be going home because we've got 14 people that can retire anytime they want to that are police officers. If they leave, we're going to be in trouble and they're not going to tell us when they're going to go. We're going to get a 30 day notice and they're going to be gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing your folks to come speak.
Thank you. I want to keep Chief's mom in our prayers. She's been ill, so please remember that. But Mr. President, council, thank you all that we were going to get Lee in legal, but I think we all know what Lee does.
Please allow me to mention the IT department. They do a tremendous job for the city of Gaston. They help us move the city, city hall. They also appear instrumental in the implementation of the expansion of the software that we have. So please forgive, acknowledge your behalf of the city.
Thank you, Rod. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Appreciate everybody that has spoken, all the department heads. It's, it's good to put faces with names. I think we know most of you, but it's good to hear from you, what you do and, and how you help our city and help our citizens. So thank you very much. We'll move on to any, I guess that's all the committees and boards. So now remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor Ford, we'll let you start.
Yes, sir. Just real quick, and I'm going to the women's club to speak, so I'm going to excuse myself real quick and go to them. I think they meet at 12. But we got DC line items that we're asking for, Washington DC. We're getting those prepared. We have those narrowed down. We're also knowing that a budget could pass anywhere from March 1st to March 8th for the previous year, for our previous line items. The master plan's winding down with the final deadline of March the 5th and we'll be meeting with the council. We may have it ready by the end of February. We're planning a public meeting in the middle of February to go over the master plan with the public, so stay tuned. Two things, don't forget the Food City tonight at five o'clock is the Food City ribbon cutting. We're all invited. And then also, John wanted me to mention their blasting rock at Nakalula Falls. So the Black Creek Trails is closed, but you can enter from the bottom. We're at the Etowah Rescue Squad and come up the hill and still enjoy the trails, but while they're blasting for safety concerns. And that won't be going on long, but they have to blast rock to be able to do what we're doing up there. So thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. All right, well, since we're at Nakalula Falls, Councilman Robinson, we'll, we'll start with you in District 7.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll ask a quick question. Is, is there any way we're going to be able to get those trails open on the weekends? Will they be blasted on Saturdays and Sundays or?
They'll be blasted.
They are going to be blasted on the weekend. All right.
So yes, they are going to be blasting on weekends and they're going around the clock because they got a deadline.
Good deal. So probably about a month they'll be doing that.
Yes, sir.
Four weeks, so it sounds good. Just want to thank, what was it Havana? Havana from Walnut Park and John from Yer Brown, the name of the kangaroos. I think it was Nakalula and Chief.
Yeah.
Pretty cool names. Wish the guy, the Lady Titans good luck this Friday against Oxford and love again here and all the department heads. I thought we got a Weld Ole Machine here, Mayor. Sounds good. That's all.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, thank Chief Jaggers for his positivity and energy. And no, I don't, I don't really have anything to add today, but I do, point of, point of clarification I'd like to get. I was told that the event tonight at Food City was a private friends and family only, not the actual. I was told the actual ribbon cutting is tomorrow. Can, is, anybody back me up on that?
It's the business after hours, the business changes.
It's tonight.
Oh, okay.
But y'all are, we're invited.
Okay, yeah, I knew we were. I just didn't want to, because they had told me, there's some folks from Food City said this was supposed to be more of a friends and family night. I didn't realize that it was the, the business after hours, so.
Friends and family.
Why knew we could go? I just didn't want anybody else to show up that.
They'll have free sausage balls.
Hey, I'll, I'll be there. That's all that matters. See y'all tonight, five o'clock. Tell everybody you know.
Can I, can I break back in just for real quick? Chief, and Chief, when we do get everything back to wide open, I would, I would like to recommend we put back on bicycle patrol, like maybe downtown and up at the Nakalula Falls on the trails. I think that would be a great thing to add to the police department and it would.
You know he carries a gun, right?
Does he not like bicycles?
He's told these 30 officers.
We still have bicycles, Councilman. We'll be glad to buy more.
That's right. There you go.
That's right. More bicycles.
More bikes. That goes with that BMX track, I think, that Councilman Wilson. All right, that's right. That's, they don't use gas. Councilman Avery, would you help us out here?
Yeah. Sorry, I, I'm keep, try to keep it short, but I do have a few notes here. So on last week, we honored MLK for his, on his birthday or for his birthday. And this week, I want to send condolences out to that family and the King Center for the sudden death of his youngest son Dexter. So want to keep them in prayer. Also, on that note, to brighten it up a little bit, so the average Joe Sports Talk Crew member, just want to kind of give an update and just continue his prayers for Reggie Davis. He's making progress. His mom made a report on Facebook. And so just want to continue to pray that Reggie pull through and just want to let him know that we're thinking of him and his family in this great time of need. Want to give a big shout out to Chris Underwood, as we know, who is down at Auburn University. And he had a successful interview for a Italia restaurant at the Auburn Hotel, at a hotel at Auburn University. So you ever down there, you get the chance to stay at the, at the hotel, kind of maybe make recommendations to see the cook and, and kind of show him some love there as he's continuing to show so much growth and making Gaston shine from afar. Want to give a big shout out and thanks to the Greater Gaston Housing Authority for the programs that they're continually hosting for the residents and our Greater Housing Authority communities. And, and just again, to highlight to those community residents, the free opportunities to learn financial literacy and so many other things that we all need as we continue to grow in this life and kind of want to do better for ourselves. Here are those free opportunities and thank you for Greater Gaston, Greater Gaston Housing Authority for putting those events on and thinking of the growth and development of our community, our community and the residents. Want to also highlight Gaston Museum, the Carvey Museum, the partnership with Gaston Library and so, so many of those entities as they're continuously creating events as it relates to our community and District 3 and, and the entire city as a whole. So go to these websites, go to the city page and, and view those for the events that our city has to offer from those particular areas. Second to last is February will be a busy. I've been asked quite a bit when we're going to have district meetings. So February will start our district meetings in District 3. We'll have a busy February in District 3 with a host of events, but also we will create a District 3, District Meeting. So please pay attention to our Facebook site along with continues to call me or text me. We have that mass text group and then also just adhere to the city council meetings and appeal for the announcement for that. My final one is, is a real bitter situation here. You know, we look for our seniors that have put in so many, so much great work in our community to retire and to live out their retirement to the best of their abilities as happy and joyful as possible. It bothered me to receive, and not only because she's a friend of the family or, or family, but because it's in our community and, and not just because it's just in District 3, but that she's sitting in a chair in her living room, watching TV and almost an inch away from her, there's bullets coming through her, her apartment. Again, I made the announcement, if not last week, the week before that. Young people, whatever this need is or this hunger that you're crying out for, this attention that you're needing. For myself, I am not hard to find. Let's have this conversation. This is a jewel of our community. Thankfully, her, her children were able to come and get her that night. Dr. Robertson, her son, was able to move her up to Huntsville with his, with his, his family. But this unnecessary violence, this unnecessary shooting, whatever this situation involved to where whoever they was looking for, which was obviously not there in that apartment, has to cease before we have someone, family member killed for this unnecessary reason. So again, we're going to highlight our first district meeting is going to be for our young people. We'll be creative in where we're having it so that we can possibly get as much attendance as possible. And so again, be, pay attention to those announcements. And again, we want to wish Ms. Robertson, you know, we pray that her nerves is calm, that she's doing well. We're thanking God that she was not harmed, but we, we definitely hope and pray that the police department through their investigation, find out who these guys are. And again, punishment be applied as it should, in the manner that it should. Thank you, and I yield the remaining of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say to all the mayor's staff, thank you for those reports and connecting all the dots for us, letting everybody know what everybody does. We appreciate that. Also, I want to just thank you for the report, Chief Jaggers as well, that you gave also as well. Also want to thank, congratulate Savannah and John on their recognition from Walnut Park and from Yer Brown, naming the kangaroos. Really want to give a shout out to the public works now in our city, no matter which direction you're coming from or going to, whether you're going north, south, east or west, you can see the progress that's being made as you approach the city bridge. And that's beautiful to see when people visit our city. We just want to tell you, thank you. And all the department heads for all that you do. Food distribution is going on right now at New Destiny. I've not been able to attend those. They're always on Tuesday, but we have a good operation. It goes fairly quickly, but in case you know anybody that needs food, that is going on today. Thank you, Ms. Moffitt, for mentioning the blood. The blood drive, for those that don't know, I've been diagnosed with ITP, stands for a 15 syllable word, idiopathic thrombocytopenia pura. When you don't have platelets in your body, your blood can't clot. We have to get blood, donors to give blood and they remove platelets from the blood. So can't live without those either. So I appreciate making us aware of that going on. On that note, Ms. Rob, Ms. Moffitt, excuse me, started a prayer chain 11 years ago when I was diagnosed with cancer. We're still praying today. We mentioned you this morning on our 5:00 AM call, but because of you starting that now, we're able to pray for others now that I'm better. So I want to give you a shout out. Also want to mention Mr. Avery. Don't forget about Bill Avery's gospel concert. Going to be a lot of good singing going on February the 2nd. Those who haven't got tickets, want to give him a shout out. And lastly, Pastor Simmons, thank you for the Bread Basket meeting. That meeting, I saw police departments, district attorney's office, the city, the county, local agencies, the mayor's office. You pulled everybody together under one roof. Thank you for what you do, not what you're going to do. Thank you for what you're doing now. I know the Bread Basket is going to be the answer to a lot of prayers, but while you're waiting on that to open, for those who don't know, his gym is open now. Along with what the city is doing, he's got his own warming center. We made donations to that. If anyone would like to contribute, so I want to just tell you, thank you for pulling us all together, sharing your heart and sharing your vision for the Bread Basket. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Latham?
I might not be the person to go last. I don't know if I like going last the first. However, let me say congratulations to Savannah and John for naming the kangaroo. Congratulations to you. I want to say good luck to the Lady Titans on this coming Friday. Everything that everybody said, I won't go back over, but congratulations to everyone and attended the event on Saturday evening with Pastor Simmons and Project 2000. We believe that that's going to be a awesome, Bread Basket is going to be awesome. So we believe that that will mature and it will be everything that it's designed to be. I do however, want to mention one thing that I heard today that I think is awesome, especially for the last three weeks that we've been hearing from department heads, the good things that are going on to it in Gaston, but the teamwork from the mayor to the city council, to the mayor's office, to the different department heads and the city of Gaston. And not just that, but the community, the efforts that everyone is making to move in a positive direction and really see Gaston to be the great place that it is. And that was, as a team, we take the credit together, we take the blame together. I think that was a powerful statement and I think that every day as we serve and we serve together, that's something that we should hold in the forefront. Whatever happens, we, it happens to us as a team and we approach it as a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Wise words, Councilwoman Latham. Thank you very much. Well, it's been a good day here at City Hall and our meeting. Appreciate all of everyone's patience and contributions. I do want to take a moment of notice. I see my friend, the principal at Yer Brown Elementary School, Ms. Katie Holland is here. She had a student here today, John, that was recognized and honored for his naming of the, of the, of the kangaroo. So thank you for staying through the meeting. And you recently, I was going to call you, but I'll just, this will, I'll do it quicker now, but you, your school received a very important honor just recently. If you wouldn't mind to come, I'm going to take a moment of personal pleasure. I want you to get to the microphone because this is important and I wanted to get all the facts right. But Yer Brown was selected in the top 25 elementary schools in the whole state of Alabama. And I'll let you tell us what were the, what were the, what's the scorecard for that?
Okay, sure. Thank you. I appreciate that acknowledgement. We're very proud of that and certainly proud of our city and proud of our school system. And it's a just great representation of the wonderful things happening in our school system. And that acknowledgement is based on the Alabama State Department of Education report card scores. So that is determined on three categories, achievement, growth and absenteeism. And so Yer Brown scored a 99 on that report card and that is based on test scores from second through fifth grade students. And that was from the 2022, 23 school year. So they take that test in the spring, they pull all that data together over the summer and then they announce those report cards in the fall. And so we're very honored that we got that and I appreciate that acknowledgement. We're very proud. We're going to keep on working hard for those students of our community. Thank you.
I think that was, was that the second year in a row? Was it 100 last year?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is the second year in a row. And actually, what's so great about it is the State Department of Education awards our school system money for that. So we actually received a $5,000 award last year and 2000 this year because they cut the budget a little bit, but we'll take it. I, I won't say no to any of it. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you and thank you to all the teachers, students and families and parents at Yer Brown for, for all they do to help their students achieve.
Thank you. And thank you all for your support. Our, our city does such a wonderful job of supporting our school system. So thank you all.
Thanks. All right, well, that'll be a great note to end on. So everybody have a good day. See you at Food City, five o'clock.